Meeting started and we'll call to order a specially called meeting of the Metropolitan Planning Commission of April 19, 2018. I want to welcome everyone and just so you know, while it's not amplified in the room, commissioners, if you just talk, it will pick it up, pick up your voice on the video. So you don't have to talk into the microphone, but talk loud enough to make sure that everybody can hear you. So today, your agenda is front of you, so we'll have to have a motion to adopt the agenda. It's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have it, the agenda is adopted. Now we are on to recognition of council members, and I did not see any council members. And so now we're on item D, which is going to be item number one, the capital improvement budget. Greg?
Thank you very much. I'm Greg Plaxton with the planning department. I'll be presenting the FY 2018 to 19 to FY 2023 to 24 capital improvements budget. Before I get into my presentation, and I do want to let you know, we have distributed some additional amendments to the CIB. These were a couple little cleanup items that departments noticed after we distributed the CIB and posted it online.
And this is the handout, Greg?
Yes, that's the handout. So as a reminder, the background for the capital improvements budget, the charter requires that the planning commission recommend a prioritized list of capital improvements to the mayor and metro council each year. A capital improvement is any building, structure, work or improvement with a life over 10 years and a cost greater than $50,000. The way the CIB typically works is any capital improvement that metro makes must be included in the CIB. However, the CIB does not guarantee funding for a project. It only lays out what metro could spend money on in the following year. The CIB includes six years of projects, but is only binding on the first year because it's re-adopted every year. The commission's role, where the charter describes the process for the CIB, it notes that the CIB should be accompanied by the report and recommendations of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. It doesn't give much detail in terms of the substance of what those recommendations should apply to. However, we noted a few related powers and responsibilities of the planning commission that have guided us in terms of how we think about the planning department and the planning commission's roles. They are make the general plan for the physical development of the metropolitan government area, adopt a zoning plan, and make plans for replanning, conservation improvements, and renewal of neighborhoods. Our understanding of the CIB is that it's focused on the physical development of the city and how infrastructure improvements are interrelated to one another. Once the capital improvements budget is adopted, there needs to be some further council action that actually allocates funding. The highest profile one of these are general obligation bonds, usually conveyed from the mayor to the council through a capital spending plan and then adopted through a bond resolution. In addition, though, there are revenue bonds primarily for water services and the sports authority. These are usually passed not every year, but every few years. 4% funds primarily for equipment and office upgrades. Enterprise funds are operating budget and the federal or state funding. In our meetings with the commissioners over the past week and a half, one of the requests that we got was to put the current spending recommendations in context of past spending levels. So what we've shown here are the amounts for past capital spending plans going back FY 2008, and highlighted in green, kind of the lower level of spending that we saw after the recession, and then in blue, the higher level in kind of the more boom years. These are the two lines that we show when we break down the commission's recommendations by kind of funding amount request by year. That's how we provide a little bit of context of, you know, what's a reasonable number of projects to recommend. So I'm going to walk through how this year's CIB is organized. For the most part, it's consistent with the last two years. The document itself has a general introduction that tries to summarize the contents of the CIB and the projects that are requested. Section one has projects funded by the urban services district. Section two has projects funded by the general services district, and then section three has a more detailed listing for each project. Across the six years of the CIB, we have requests for $7.6 billion in spending across 539 projects. These include major ongoing programs as well as some very detailed individual projects. You can still see the bulk of spending, or the greatest year of spending is still the first fiscal year, FY 19, and then you drop off to a more consistent level for FY 20 to 24. Summary of project funding requests by funding method. Again, you can see proposed geo-bonds are the most requested type of funding, followed by revenue bonds, federal funds, proposed 4% funds, and so on. To organize the CIB, to make it a little bit more understandable, put similar projects together, we organize --
I need to go first?
We organize departments into similar groups. Schools and public works are on their own, in their own section. The other ones that we've identified are enterprises, transit, development, and culture, facilities, and technology, and safety. I want to highlight that the enterprises group is new this year. In the past two years, we've had water services as a standalone group. We've shifted over some departments that act like, you know, at least conceptually are business-like, have business-like activities, such as the municipal auditorium or the farmer's market, and grouped them all under enterprises, that where at least conceptually, they have a bottom line that, you know, you can use to help make sense of their project requests. In the section three of the CIB, project details, most projects are conveyed in one of these two formats. The one at the top is sort of a more fully detailed request for projects that are assessed against the general plan. We have a simplified version of this on the bottom for projects that are outside the scope of the general plan. In the more detailed set, we convey the project ID, status, it's resubmitted, not started, resubmitted in progress, or new, the type of project it is, a capital asset, an overarching program, asset preservation, a capital priority group. These are clusters identified by the mayor that departments sort of select projects into, title and description, and if there's a different department that actually implements the request, that would be noted here as well. Then we have a section on priority information in the middle. This is where the planning commission's recommendation, either its priority level and any further comment is included, as well as the departments, how they identify the priority for the project, and then council priority and the council districts. Council priority, this is a new format this year, based on their new approach for managing their requests. Council considered a range of requests this year and identified priorities, 1 through 161, for projects within, across their districts. Not all projects have a priority like that, but where it is, that's where we include it. Then we have the cost information, project costs, the total amount, and then by year, by year shown in the thousands. We also show, for the first time this year, we try to identify the phase of the project, and we've asked departments to break out their request by what's the next phase needed, either a plan or study, land or right-of-way, or build and purchase. We also show the tax district, whether it's funded by the GSD or the USD, and if there's any impact to the operating budget. And then last, on the either side, we show our assessment information, how projects align with the Nashville Next guiding principles, the growth and preservation concept map, and a set of efficient government criteria that we track. We had a request to delve into one of the Nashville Next criteria that we look at. So as a reminder, these are the seven guiding principles, plus whether or not a project supports centers and corridors. This is what goes into the Nashville Next ranking that we show, high, medium, and low. And then each one of the seven principles is broken down into more specific criteria. I'm going to delve into the ensure opportunity for all guiding principle with reducing disparities, the criteria for that. For this one, we look at it in two ways. These are two different routes you can get to some number of points on this criteria. The first is some projects are what we consider targeted services. These are projects that specifically serve a disadvantaged community, in which case they would receive 10 points, or that derive from a master plan that included equity measures. That would give you five points. And so as an example, the Harris-Hillman School, which is a school for students with special needs, receives 10 points. Head Start Centers, a targeted service, receives 10 points. The walking bike master plan, considered equity measures in developing their priority rating system, that would receive five points. The other way that we look is projects that aren't intrinsically serving disadvantaged community. We look at the demographics in the service area for the project. We consider eight demographic factors. These are all rooted in census data that we track at the block group level. Residents that are a non-Hispanic minority, Hispanic, people with disabilities, or seniors, and then households with limited English speakers, households that are below poverty, without a car, or single mothers. We add up the percentage of each one of those characteristics in each block group. This is kind of the map of how those lay out throughout the county. And essentially what we do is for any project whose service area is above the median value for the county, that would be these areas, we then assign points from five to 10. If they're right at the median, they would get five. If they're the highest concentration project, they would get 10 points. For our recommendations this year, as you'll recall, we have a series of sort of tiers of recommendations. I'm going to go through each one of these in a little bit more detail, but I did want to highlight that one of them, not scored, isn't used right now. That's something that we could use if we feel projects that are submitted without sufficient information for us to score. In practice, the way that this has been used is projects that are added after the planning acts are identified with an N rating. So for our first set of rankings, we have A, recommend as planned. There's a number of different kinds of projects that go into here. Generally, we use this to convey projects that are of a high priority and that the planning commission recommends a project be pursued without necessarily recommending a level of funding. So the first set of projects that are included in here are projects whose funding is already secured. Primarily, these are water projects that rely on revenue bonds, as well as arts commission projects funded through the 1% for arts fund. Our second set of projects are what we've started labeling as core maintenance needs. This is our paving program, traffic, bridges, stormwater, fire department maintenance, libraries maintenance, parks maintenance, and general services maintenance. And then last, we have what we've described as Nashville Next priorities, things that either through some project-specific factor, their ranking on the Nashville Next assessment, or some other factor make these, we feel recommendable for this year. And as we went through with each one of you one-on-one, we've got a number of projects in the southeast, a few self-supporting projects, livability projects in Madison and Donaldson, parks and greenways, primarily projects that are leveraging outside funding, a small number of school renovations and additions, and the sidewalks and bikeway programs. The second level of recommendation is B, recommend as planned if funding is available. These are projects that are aligned with Nashville Next, but they didn't rise to the same level of priority as the A projects. Most projects in the CIB are identified as B. That's about 514 of 690 projects total. For the first time this year, we're also using C, recommend further work. Here, we've identified three projects, all of which are requested in the out-years, not FY 19, from municipal auditorium, where we're recommending that the auditorium develop a business plan and estimate a return on investment for these three. Next, we have a set of projects that we identify as D, non-general plan projects. What we do, these are things that seem to fall outside of the scope of the planning commission's expertise and other responsibilities. Generally, what we're looking for when we identify projects in this category are projects that are fleet or equipment purchases, IT projects, retrofitting office space, and contingency funding. In some cases, it's, there's a little bit of a gray line between what counts as a general plan project and what counts as a non-general plan project. Generally, what we try to do is understand the planning commission's role in terms of managing land use regulations and how that affects our growth patterns throughout the county, and then coordinating other public investments, such as infrastructure investments, where you want to pave a road and repair a water line, you want to, you know, kind of manage those to get them lined up and ordered correctly, or acquisitions of land or how we use metro land. I highlight this because it's been a point of discussion, and we kind of wanted to prepare everyone to delve into this one a little bit. And then last, we have, we do identify some projects over the years as not conforming to the general plan. These are our X recommendations. Here, the recommendation is not to fund the project until the project and the plan align. This year, we have one project in this category, widen Bell Road from Blackwood Drive to Smith Springs Road. The request is widen, is to widen it from two lanes to four lanes. The major and collector street plan identifies it for three lanes. Our recommendation is to modify the project to reflect the major and collector street For projects that are requesting funding sources other than geo-bonds, this is how the draft recommendations lay out, by volume of funds requested a year. You can see there are a large number of A projects here. That's primarily reflecting the water revenue bonds. And then these are the recommendations for proposed geo-bonds. You'll see in FY 19, the A recommended projects come out to about that average level of spending for FY 2008 to 2011. That's if those projects are fully funded, which is not necessarily going to be the case. And then our recommendation is to submit the FY 2018 to 2019 capital improvements budget for consideration by the mayor with the amendments provided. And I can take questions now.
Thank you, Greg. And before we open the item for public hearing, I do want to say thank you to you, Greg, and also Elham Daha, and then George Rucker, who's also helped with this particular proposal. I think we should give them a round of applause. Lot of work, and I know the commissioners, you've talked to them in the last few weeks, and so we appreciate all the hard work that you've done. So we'll open this item for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? You want to speak? Come on up. Come on up. Welcome. Two minutes.
I'm Tom Sharp from the metro health department. I just wanted to thank Greg. I know they put a lot of work into this, and to thank you guys for, I hope, putting the Woodbine replacement building in the A recommendations, for whatever that's worth, and I hope it's worth something. That's a really valuable thing. It's a really needed thing, and we really do appreciate the support from the staff and from you guys. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else? Scott, you want to say anything? Are you good?
We're good, thank you.
Okay. Any other departments? Make sure we get it. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, you want to start? Vice Chair?
Well, I have not read this from cover to cover, but as Greg just said, I do want to commend the staff because I know that this has been a tremendous undertaking, and it's been a multi-year undertaking. And I know a lot of the changes that have been made, they may appear sort of like tweaks along the way, but I know that it represents sort of a sea change from how things were done prior to Nashville Next. And really like the way we're aligning this with Nashville Next. It's kind of keeping Nashville Next as a living document. Definitely appreciate the way each project is scored relative to the Nashville Next priorities. I, for one, didn't even know we weren't doing the opportunity for all until a couple months ago, and I really appreciate that. It's a vast undertaking. I know that we have a long ways to go from here in terms of what actually gets funded, but I hope that the recommendations are taken seriously by our council members. And, you know, a lot of work went into figuring out what we wanted Nashville Next to be, what we wanted to grow, how we wanted our city to grow. And obviously, the capital improvement budget is key to implementing that vision. And so, you know, I just applaud you for putting this all together, and I hope that it will be a document that goes forward as council debates this, as the mayor debates it, and council debates it, to really make an informed assessment of where we need to be investing our resources. So that's it. I do not have any very specific comments.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Everything she said. But the one that didn't, the widening of Bell Road, do you mind explaining that one more time about just the evaluation process for that and what your recommendation is, if any?
Sure. So essentially, this was a council member request from this past fall. At that time, you know, we reviewed all of the council member requests, road projects in particular. We compare against the major and collector street plan. We work with Michael Briggs and our transportation team, as well as public works, to review sort of the current status there, ongoing development patterns, and see if there's anything that comes out as warranting a change in the major and collector street plan. When we went through this process for last year's CIB, we had a larger number of projects that were in that X category, and in some cases, we recommended removing projects. In some cases, we recommended modifying projects. And in two cases, we did recommend changing the MCSP. When Nashville Next was brought back around to the planning commission for adopting amendments to it and updates, those changes to the MCSP were made. So we do go through a process of trying to determine, you know, how are conditions changing? Is there anything that warrants a change in the MCSP? And I think this project this year, I think our team did not see anything that warranted that change. I think primarily the concerns that we've heard are that traffic backs up on the two-lane road when people need to turn, and so that seems in line with the MCSP's recommendation for a three-lane standard.
That's all I have. Thank you. Commissioner Shipp?
I was kind of hoping to listen to the other commissioners who've already been through this once.
Okay, we'll come back to you.
Okay. That'd be great.
All right. Commissioner Moore?
I have to echo that.
Echo that. All right. Commissioner Goblen?
On the public, on the, you mentioned this street widening and that sort of thing. We get in front of this commission almost with every subdivision request, we get traffic as an issue. How, this one was, Bell Road was initiated by a council member. Do most of these come through public works, or they're the ones that's saying that this is where the priorities are in their perspective?
Traditionally, public works does not provide the specific projects that they would like to pursue as part of their request. They request an overall program amount and have not usually provided, except for a few very high-profile projects. They don't usually identify specific projects within that. Usually, if you see a specific road project or sidewalk project in the CIB, it's there from a council member request. This year, we worked with public works and have included in their road reconstruction program and an identification of the projects they would like to pursue if fully funded in year one. So we're going to continue working with them to bring a longer sense of their priorities, sort of long-term, into the CIB.
So as we're getting these requests in certain areas of town, a lot of growth. From my perspective, as a, knowing that there's quite a bit of growth going to happen in that community, are we proactively in a position to let them know what's coming, I guess? Or how does that work?
That is an active topic of conversation for us, to sort of determine how do we match the concerns from, sort of as development goes on, particularly roadway and transportation issues, how do we get that incorporated into the CIB and the prioritization process? I would say we are not yet at the point where you could rely on the CIB to say, transportation projects will occur in your area, or no, they won't. We haven't been able to sort of pull everything together yet enough for that. But that is a high priority for us to determine, and that's a cross-division team that we have between my group in capital planning, transportation team, land development, and design studio, or design, community design.
And the flip side to that would be the idea of ultimately incorporating some of those improvements into the staff report, so that, right? I mean, in a perfect world, we would, so we would say we see these improvements are coming?
I don't, I think we're still working out exactly how that looks, but it's certainly to have a stronger linkage between kind of the work that y'all do throughout the year and the CIB, for sure.
We're still looking at each project, when it comes in for rezoning or for a subdivision, we're working with public works on traffic studies, and we're trying to look at how those studies are done, too, so that they look a little bit more regionally on large projects out in suburban areas, and so they're not just focused on turn lanes into the project site, but that they do an analysis of the overall area so that we know what improvements might be needed based on that project's impact and based on the background traffic from other projects that have been approved already in that area. So we are working more closely with public works to try to fine-tune how we do traffic studies. And I -- The CIB really focuses on Nashville Next priorities, centers and corridors, and, I mean, there are instances where we would look at maybe local road having more connectivity, but generally, it's focused on the centers and corridor infrastructure to support those policies.
Right. And that's a conversation we've entered into with community to design, with the recent Haynes Trinity study, to sort of see how would we incorporate kind of the recommended new collector street into the CIB, you know, kind of getting the network of streets of that and visions. I would also add that the recommended project for a transportation study for southeast Nashville is also intended to help manage that, like get a better understanding of the priority road network down there, as well as how we can incorporate an overarching study's recommendations into development as it comes in bit by bit. We're hoping that serves as a model for other parts of the county.
I do want to compliment staff. This is an overwhelming task. I think we're, it's, we're going through an evolution with it. This is certainly taking a step up from last year, and last year was good. So I very compliment the work and have no reason to disagree with anything I put in here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sims?
I want to echo what everybody else has said. This is unbelievable work. This is my second year, but I have to admit, this is overwhelming. And I think the only thing I can legitimately add to any of this is just to make sure that, not that every decision is correct, but that the methodology is correct, and that you're using the best we know of that. I think this is the second year of a city-funded grant to explore this kind of new budgeting process. Am I correct?
Our, the capital planning team, myself and Elham, where it was originally established through a public investment plan, the PIP process, after the, yeah, which is not a grant, but it had an uncertain long-term commitment. After the first year, finance shifted us out from a PIP to just a regular staff position.
And it is a requirement of the charter that we do this, so that is why it's a permanent function of the department.
This is just a methodology that is quite complex, and very few cities undertake it. I think those that do end up loving it, and I'm really glad we're doing it. I think there's been some discussion, though, among the council people themselves as to whether they like this or not, and how much they actually use it. Has there been any type of gap analysis in terms of what would it take for the city as a whole for us to truly adopt this type of method for budgeting? Because I think the cities that have done research on this show that it's a very powerful tool.
I don't know that there's been any discussion of broadening this approach, and I, as you've noted, it is, there's some disagreement on council as to just sort of how to incorporate it.
Well, anything that I can do just as a member, I would love to help you guys because, again, the research shows that the cities that have gone through the pain of birthing this have grown a healthy child, so I'm really hopeful to do this. The other thing I'd like to just say is that I think this is such a good way for us to align the many complexities of public policy. I mean, you've got strategic planning going on, you've got Nashville Next going on, every department has its own internal workings, and I don't know how else we would do this if we didn't have some type of tool that helped us make decisions based on priorities like this. So again, my compliments to you guys, and rather than try to give my feedback on any one topic, I just want to make sure that we, one, compliment the staff and the quality of staff, and the second is to keep urging you to please keep pushing on this kind of method.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner?
So as the longest-tenured planning commissioner, this is an incredible improvement, and in the old days, it was just a rubber stamp, and we were literally expected to review this. And so this is now a tool that we can use to approve this very important budget, but hopefully that other departments can use as well. So I have one question and then a couple of quick comments. Much like the state with their rainy day fund, does the city have a rainy day fund that during these healthy, good times, we are contributing to, to provide for slush funds in years like '08 and '09?
That I actually do not know. That's because kind of our role is focused on checking alignment with Nashville Next and prioritizing overall. There's a pretty There's a pretty, there's a distinct gulf between us and finance in terms of the actual financing piece. So it's not something where we delve too much into that piece of it.
Well, when we're looking at capital spending in years out, three, four, or five years, we know we're going to have some type of correction. And so that would be a question for us to answer. Then a couple of other points which we brought up in our meeting. One, we need to always balance lifecycle costing and upfront costing as we look at this, so we can make sure we're distilling that to the department heads and not necessarily taking the cheapest, least expensive alternative, but look at lifecycle costing. Two, it would be helpful next year to have a sort of comprehensive review of the physical condition of assets and begin to look at ages of roofs and parking lots and failing infrastructure that I know Scott has in his department, to try to look at this holistically. And then, three, if there's a way to sort of get finance to categorize commitments they've made through economic development deals or other things that we can begin to track, that is very difficult for us to know what they've made commitments to do. Other than that, I think this is the yeoman's job, and I commend the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Michelle, you want to say anything? Come back to you.
Yeah, I just, it's really interesting, and I really learned a lot going through the whole thing. And I think, I didn't get to see really how it was done before, but from everything I've heard, I mean, this is just a really vast improvement. So, I just had questions about it. So, for example, a whole bunch of things, like, and I'll get to the hospital question in a minute. But, for example, how did you, how are the populations of the minorities identified? Is that through census data?
It is.
So that's static between censuses?
It's, I'm sorry, it's based on the American Community Survey. So it's the five-year average that drills down to the block group level. So it's, it is slightly out of date. It's not as out of date as the 2010 census, but it's also a fuzzier picture than the 2010 census.
Okay. And also, how do we know, so, the departments themselves, do they, and you sort of clarified this when we met, but, do they understand this criteria for judging these projects? And do they work towards meeting those?
It varies. We haven't dug into the specifics of the criteria with very many departments so far. That's on our work plan for this year.
Because that could really change the project. And do they end up getting their grade? Have they this year seen what their projects are scored?
The draft CIB has been distributed to the departments, yes. But they, we haven't, we haven't yet provided, except for the projects that were reviewed at the council this past October through December, the departments haven't seen the details of their scoring for their projects this year.
And, so, you haven't had time to have feedback from the departments about whether or not they feel that your scoring system matched how they felt about their project?
Only intermittently, like, only occasionally. Right. But we haven't sought that comprehensively yet.
So, one of the things I really, a couple more questions. If transit passes or doesn't pass, how does that affect this budget?
So, the narrow response is that if transit passes, there, in the mayor's CIB, there will need to be added projects that would implement the transit program. That's the narrow view. In the long term, I think departments will need to sort of incorporate that into their long-term work plans. That will, you know, sort of surface as the CIB is updated year to year. I wouldn't anticipate, other than like the actual transit program itself, I wouldn't anticipate major changes this year. If it doesn't pass, I think, you know, I think it's sort of revisiting of, you know, kind of what the next step is and seeing how the community conversation goes.
So, looking at this whole scoring system, I'm kind of asking the same question Commissioner Simpson did, I think, really, but how do we evaluate that it's working? How do we know that you're scoring it in a way that the highest priority projects really have been identified? And what do you think would be a good way to do that next year?
I think we, I think from the commissions level, it could work to delve into just the scoring piece in a work session setting, where we provide, I mean, you have the scoring details for, you know, a certain subset of high-priority, high-performing projects. We could delve into that and see kind of across projects, like across school projects or parks projects, which are the ones that seem to be strong performing and why. And I think at the end of the day, it's partly testing your intuition and partly checking for things that are surprising and see if, in retrospect, they make sense.
We were trying to keep this discussion sort of at a higher level, so we didn't get into every last detail of how we analyzed every project, but we can get into more detail in work sessions to, and I think we're open to ideas on how to come up with better ways to score or ways to track the outcome of the scoring. I mean, I think this is, we're still in year two of a complete overhaul of a really large and complicated process, so if there's other ways to do this, we're still open to those ideas on how to do that.
Well, and this might be the best way.
Yeah.
The whole trick would just be to figure out if it truly is, maybe, by putting in some kind of control, where you have maybe someone from another planning department, from another city, score a sample of projects and see if they score it the same way, somehow like that, so that you see the scores really, I mean, I'm a neuroscientist, so we always have to have controls.
Sure. So, and I would flag that there's two issues. One is, are we applying our scoring system consistently? But the other is, is the scoring system capturing what's important? And I think we can certainly take a look at how we address both of those.
But we're scoring relative to Nashville Next. We're not necessarily scoring relative to each individual. I mean, and we hope that the department's plans align or will ultimately eventually align with Nashville Next. But they don't necessarily, nor do they necessarily, these align with council priorities. So, there's a lot of factors outside our control that would, these may still always be the high-performing ones relative to Nashville Next, but they may not come out as the high-performing ones based on those other priorities, competing priorities. Ultimately, it's getting everyone to say Nashville Next is the guiding document that's going to, you know, drive us forward, but I don't think we're quite there.
Yeah, we could never control for the political environment, nor is it our job to.
That's another way to put it.
Can you share more questions?
One more.
One more.
It's just about the hospital. So I was really confused about why the hospital projects were all graded A. And so, if you don't mind speaking to that.
Sure. So, in general, you know, what we're looking for are how projects interact with how the county grows, how we manage land uses, how the private market responds to public investments, or how we need to coordinate different investments together. And so the general hospitals' projects are all sort of about the building or interior to the building. Things like x-ray machines, a retrofitted kitchen, a retrofitted entryway, neonatal units, these kinds of things, that, in our understanding right now, don't connect to the other roles of the Planning Commission. They don't have an impact on how the private market might, you know, prioritize investments in one area of the county or another. They don't really have overflow impacts, other than just sort of site design issues, if they change the exterior at all. They don't really need to be coordinated with other sets of investments that we make, like a park or a road. And so they seem like they're outside the scope. Now, we can go through and score on the basis of the general hospital as a whole. I mean, it actually scores very well, because it's serving a disadvantaged community, it's promoting health, there's offering services, and there's, it will score reasonably well, but it won't give you much information in terms of, are there any projects within these that should be recommended or not? That's, seems like more of a responsibility for the general hospital staff, and it doesn't connect to the Planning Commission's overall role. Now, it's a little bit of a gray area. We kind of strayed over that way with our recommendations on municipal auditorium, which we felt that that was appropriate, because those are operating business-like activities, there's a simple bottom line that they're seeking to achieve, and we want to support them as they work towards that. In this case, we don't see that as a similar, simple bottom line issue for the general hospital. I think if we were to say that the general hospital should be operated like a business-like department, maximizing its bottom line, I think that would be a very contentious position for us to take. And I don't think that's what you're asking for, but I'm just by point of comparison. And so, one of the things, after our discussion, we've been talking about internally, is we can work a little bit more closely with them to sort of structure their requests to follow best capital budgeting practices. So they still lean very much into, most of their spending is in one year, they haven't phased it out. There's not a strong connection between what they identify, they don't identify different levels of priorities, they don't align their requests to pass their typical past spending amounts, which range between zero or one to $5 million a year. We can work with them on those sort of best practices. I'm still not sure that there's a role for the Planning Commission to, you know, kind of weigh in on the overall level of prioritization, but ultimately, that's the Planning Commission's decision. That's our reasoning so far.
Well, thanks. I really appreciate all those clarifications, and I appreciate that you answered all my questions during the process. And thank you very much, and thank you very much, and thank you very much for all the hard work that you did on that.
So, I try not to comment too much.
Commissioner Moore?
Oh?
That's okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Moore?
I really don't have any more questions, but I do want to say, especially with this being my first year, thank you for laying this out and making it somewhat digestible and not too scary, and thank the rest of the staff, so.
So sorry, Commissioner. So I try not to comment too much, and just a few things that I see where we're going, which is a really great thing. And I think, a couple of things that just this conversation and us getting back in line with what the charter has asked us to do. And that is, I think that it's helped the departments make a much more formal process within their own divisions. Some have done that really well in the past, but I think that this has helped them start to think and plan ahead, some. You know, I think also it's helped some of the departments communicate together a little more, not say that the heads don't communicate, I know that they meet often. And so I think that the process is becoming more formalized, and it's becoming a regular thing. And so, you know, you can't fund something that's not in the CIB, which I think is important to note. And so, the staff has done a good job. And the first question that I asked Greg was, how many council members are we going to make upset? And how many citizens are we going to make upset? And so, I think that the team has done a good job in minimizing that. I also think the second thing that this has done, it's really helped the council think about planning, and it's also, I think, helped them think about their districts and also think about the city as a whole. So, I think good things, it's not perfect, but I do believe that it's a vast improvement, like Commissioner Haines said and the other commissioners. So I'm excited where we are. I believe, too, you know, we also have to think that this is a large undertaking from a staffing position, and so we've got to think about that moving forward. So, anything else? Any other comments? We'll need a motion to approve, and let me make sure, the motion to approve will also include the three amendments that you handed out, correct?
That's right.
Which is the new Casey Branch Library, New Hadley Park Branch Library, and the East Bank Public Infrastructure Co., is that correct?
That is correct.
So the motion will include those three projects as amendments?
That's a motion that we approved, staff's recommendation to approve the CIB with these three amendments.
As amendments.
As amendments.
Second. That's a proper motion and second. Any other discussion? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Now we're on to item E, other business, historic zoning.
Nothing, Mr. T.
Nothing, Mr. T, okay. Parks, anything?
No report.
No report? Executive Committee, very quickly, we are still moving forward with the search. We are meeting here at the end of April and going into May with five, I believe it's five candidates. And we're going to bring the final two to three candidates to the commission, if that is the will of that committee. And so, that is moving forward, and I just wanted to give y'all an update on that. And so I, do you have questions?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Have we given any discussion or thought to delaying the final approval until we know who our next mayor is, at least for the next year? Are we ready to just move?
Well, you know, that is something that I think we will have to decide as a commission. So, what I would say is that, you know, it would be my thought to, you know, this is y'all's ultimate decision, us as a commission together, so you need to think about that within your own hearts. And we also, I believe, need to look at all of the candidates candidly, and if we feel comfortable with a particular candidate moving forward and the current process where we are with mayor. But it will ultimately be a decision amongst this commission to make that determination. You know, I think that we, this is just one person, one commissioner, that we have. If we need to delay it, or if you all think that we need to delay that, we have a really good team in place with Bob, and, you know, we can probably do that. But if we feel comfortable moving forward with the candidates, I would say, you know, in working, I will tell you, I've been working with the mayor's office and getting that feedback, too. And I would encourage y'all to do that as well. So, I know that's kind of not a concrete answer, but you all need to think about that.
That was a pleasurable answer.
Thank you, Jeff.
It was a good answer, and, you know.
It was a balanced answer. I hope.
Let's start on the small committee.
Well, if you, so, I do have a list of the names, I just don't have them with me. But if you have questions or want to know that, just call Shannon, and she will give you a list. I just don't have that in front of me at this meeting. And so I want to say thank you for everybody that has reached out to Shannon and given your input. And because of, I mean, you all know this, I mean, I would love to, that we could all get together and discuss, but we can't, so, because of sunshine laws. So that is why we're handling it the way we did. I do know that the committee that met, that Mr. Haines was on, they took it very seriously and narrowed it down to some good candidates. And so, the, our metro staff from HR felt really good about that process, and I want to thank Jeff for taking valuable time out of his day to do that. So, we'll continue to move forward, and by the time we get it to the full commission with the two or three candidates, I mean, if y'all don't feel comfortable and want to wait, we can do that.
And so, what was the date that you said we probably have?
So, I think it's, I looked at my last email, we will probably be done by the beginning of May, the first couple of weeks of May, and then we'll have it before us either end of May or going into June. So, you know, it's just, it's, I think that our timeline, we've stayed pretty consistent, and I told y'all we would try to do this within four to six months, and we started this right after the first of the year. So I feel like our timeline has been moved along correctly.
So we'll have interviews now? So we'll have interviews now with the last couple candidates, or?
No, we can, you can ask, just, I would say, the last several candidates, you can ask them any type of.
I was just curious with the processes. Do we have to have a specially-called meeting? Like, how do you handle that?
We will. Yes, we'll have a specially-called meeting. It probably won't be a normal committee meeting because, a normal commission meeting because we have a lot of items that we need to do, and we don't want to go into midnight, right?
No, no.
So we'll probably have to, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll try to figure out when y'all are available and figure out a time for a specially-called meeting. And then, you know, we have to notice it and all of that, so same type of process.
I may have mentioned this before, but I, just to keep our decisions from being bifurcated, it would be really nice to have an odd number?
Yes. You had mentioned that before.
Decision's on.
We have an odd number going into the next thing, and I'm assuming that we'll, we'll have more than one.
It'll take for us to get to two, and we'll be divided, so.
No, 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 I, I agree. Any other questions on that? Thank you, Vice Chair, great question. And then the council member's not here, so the next item is, Bob, anything on, any announcements?
We will continue to play musical chairs with our locations. I'll just keep reminding of different locations. April 26th, we'll be back at the school board at 2601 Bransford Avenue. May 10th, we'll be at 936 East Trinity Lane at the East Police Precinct for our commission meeting. And May 24th, we will be back at the Howard Office Building in the Sunny West Conference Center. And then, if there's a special election, and even, even if there's not, we, since we have to send out notices early, we probably will be at a different location in June.
It's election day?
It is, but they don't have, they don't.
They don't have voting on?
They don't need the room on that day. But if there's a, if there's a runoff, I should say, not a special election, if there's a runoff in, sometime in June, then they probably will need that, that room for early voting, so we will likely pick a new location for our first meeting in June. And so one thing that I also wanted to say, to think about, was, I guess I would like to get feedback on if you'd like to have a special meeting for the CIB to deal with this individually, or if you would like this back on a regular meeting. And you don't have to give an answer today, but just something to think about for next year, whether you like doing it this way or just include it on a regular meeting, which could be, could be a long agenda, but adding this, we kind of felt like this needed special attention, and so you wouldn't be considering it at midnight on a meeting where there was lots of items, but if you'd rather do it on a regular meeting, let, let us know.
Okay, that's good. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville dot go.